Thank you. I made sense from there. It was really a process. It's very hard. It's one of the things that we need to do. Um, good. I think.
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine. You know, whatever works. Just like, like, put it right in. Okay. So, you're gonna cool off. Yeah. You're all right. Right.
How's the volume levels?
Sure.
Maybe higher? Be a little higher.
Have a little.
We do wanna get started more right after 5:00 P.M. Um, so...
Yeah.
Better?
Oh, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. So, we do just wanna start out by welcoming all of you who came out tonight. Um, on behalf of the Broom County Safe Housing Task Force, we are thrilled that each of you are here, whether you came to just listen and observe or to participate and share. Um, again, we're thrilled. I'm Rebecca Rathma. This is Mark Schuster. Together, we co-chair the Broom County Safe Housing Task Force. Um, a few brief points before we jump in. Um, in the event of an emergency, the exit is immediately behind you and then your head left directly outside. Should you need to use the restroom at any point during the forum this evening, you are obviously welcome to get up and do so. The women's room is across the hall and the men's room is right outside the door to your right. Um, so as many of you know, Broom County Executive Jason Garner pulled together the Safe Housing Task Force in late September, really with the goal of promoting collaborative conversations that would result in public policies to ensure that the lowest-income households across Broom County have access to stable, decent, affordable homes. When we started, we knew that in terms of stability, instances of homelessness and housing instability are up 40% across Broom County in recent years, and local school districts are reporting that mobility rates among students as high as 40%. In terms of affordability, we know that on average, extremely low-income households in Broom County spend more than 90% of their monthly income just to cover rent. And as far as quality, an estimated one-third of the apartments that are available and affordable to the lowest-income households across Broom County demonstrate hazardous conditions that put the health and safety of occupants at risk. In terms of instances of child blood lead levels that are elevated in the youth under the age of six, in Broom County, we see significant higher rates than throughout our state and all of New York. So core group members have been meeting every other week, just about since October, to really dig into all of the aspects that are involved in this dense, uncertain, multifaceted issue. Um, regular input has come as well from executive committee members. I don't want to get too far into the conversation before pointing out a couple of our core, um, core group and executive committee members that are here this evening to represent. So I would just ask, some of you sat in the back still, uh, because you thought you'd get away from, from saying hello, but if you are a member of the core group for the task force, could you just raise your hand? We have the City of Binghamton Code Department represented with Chris Schneider, Larry Saul, the Saul Associate, the local property owner and landlord. We have Josh Phelps with the Broom County Health Department, Nancy Williams and Sonia Bennett with Broom County Department of Social Services. Other representatives that are on the core group that aren't here this evening are Johnson City and Town of Union Code and the Planning Personnel. We have legal services represented at the cap of the core group level. Um, Dr. Tanya Thompson with the Binghamton City School District is also a member of the core group. I'm not leaving anyone out. Sharon Sorkin with City of Binghamton's Corporate Council. Um, and we've had some other corporate council members as well. Um, as, as far, what's that? Christina, is Christina here this evening? Okay. Okay, Christina Kramer is representing the county executive office consistently at the core group level as well. Um, County Executive Jason Garner is here from the Executive Committee. Um, solid representation, again, he took the lead in initiating this effort in the first place, and we do also have consistent participation from Mayor David with the City of Binghamton, Mayor Teavey with Johnson City, um, Mary Kaminsky with the Broom County Legislature's Office, and the other legislators that have been engaged, as well as town supervisor, Yumi and Rick Mabry. Welcome. Come on, come right on in. There's a sign-in in the, in the back. If you missed the sign-in on your way in, no worries. One's kind of, everyone trickles in. We're just gonna distribute it throughout, so you should get a chance to sign in and also add your contact information if you'd like. Um, our goal tonight, though, is really not to talk much more about the task force itself, um, but to hear from all of you. So the first section, we were hoping to be able to put the agenda up. We had a couple of tech issues, so we're just going to kind of leave this clear picture here until we get into the presentation. But we wanted to reserve the very first section of this public forum to hear from all of you. So whether you are an individual who has experienced challenges in navigating the local housing system, if you are a tenant or a property owner, a service provider, really any law and ever spans, um, we are certainly willing and would welcome your perspective. Um, and we just want to open up the floor. We will just ask, we've got about 40 minutes for this, this open floor section, um, so we're gonna try to limit it to three minutes for each individual to share, but of course, if there's time permitting at the end, um, and you'd like to stand up and share again for an additional couple of minutes, we'll, uh, we can certainly do that. We just wanna make sure that everyone has a chance. Mark will be walking around with a microphone, um, so no need to stand up or come out here. Just raise your hand. Um, and then also, we will have note cards and pens if you're not comfortable sharing publicly and you do want to make sure that your voice is heard, uh, you can certainly write your thoughts and comments down on those note cards as well. With that, I'll open it.
As Rebecca said, uh, my name's Mark Schuster. I work for the Broom County Health Department. Uh, I have kind of a unique perspective of housing because I run a program called Healthy Neighborhoods. Uh, we are in year five, five-year grant. Uh, we're, our program goes out to, um, houses, apartments, units, uh, single-family, owner-occupied, uh, large rental buildings, um, Section 8 housing. What we do is we go out there and we're looking for health and safety factors. We're not code enforcement. What we're there is to educate, uh, the tenants basically on, these are right, these are wrong, here are some easy ways that you can remedy some of the issues, here's some free supplies. So when we're leaving there, we're making sure it's a much healthier, safe place for them to be, for them, their families. Uh, so we're doing smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, CO detectors, cleaning supplies. In the City of Binghamton, we're doing, uh, blue bags, uh, stickers before, um, they got rid of those. We understand that with housing, it's kind of a two-way road. It's not all the landlord's fault and it's not all the tenant's fault. We know what we see. The idea with this forum is to kind of hear what everybody else is seeing. We need to know if we're on the same page as really what's happening in this county. So this is your opportunity to share stories, what you've seen, what your clients have seen, friends, family, what they've seen, so we can get a better understanding if, are we on the same page as everybody else. Um, so just raise your hand if you have something to share, if you have questions to ask, this is your opportunity to do it. Uh, there are note cards and pens, uh, if you wanna write something down, um, for future. We're also putting together a survey that will be on Survey Monkey. Uh, if you're writing down your email, you will get a link to that. If you think of something, uh, if you wanna pass it along to other friends, families, uh, clients, they'll also be able to share on top of just time. Okay, so if they weren't able to be involved here, we'll listen to their voice also. Does anybody wanna start up?
Hello, so, um, my first question is, how do, um, people get so lucky to be in this core group? Um, because I wanted to know, there were like a bracket of, um, residents on this group because that would be a first start as well, to make sure that there's like, a community, you know, a community member or resident that are living in these conditions could have a voice in that core.
So, and we, and I can certainly speak to that. We do want to definitely make sure that we're leaving the open floor, um, for sharing of personal experiences and, um, whether they're positive or negative, um, as we, and again, we weren't able to look the agenda up, so, so sorry for that. Um, Asher? So, we will have the time a little bit later as we're going through some of the details of the core group deliberations for those particular kind of questions, whether it's to the task force or to individual members. Um, but since we didn't clarify that, I'll just answer that quick and then we can do the total, and it's a great question. Um, the task force came about after, um, a few other events, the housing summit that was put on by the county in partnership with the Health Department, um, just sort of a year ago, and a couple of other forums and local community formats. And so, in tallying and reviewing all of the community input that was given during those other forums and formats, that kind of gave us the foundation to start with. And then we've got, um, kind of that high-level internal protocol folks among departments and agencies to give input on that foundation. And which is why we're now bringing it to kind of that public forum opportunity now, rather than just throwing the larger, huge, housing-dense issue out there to start, trying to nail it down a little bit, um, before putting it out publicly. But, I mean, any personal ex-
You just want personal experiences right now?
For right now, yes, yeah. Yeah, we wanted to provide just that forum for folks to share personal experiences first. Is there a guy in the back?
Um, so I went to detox in December and when I got out, they told me, DSS told me I had to go to the ACC and I had explained to them that there was a conflict of interest, a personal conflict of interest and I couldn't go there, that I wouldn't be willing to go anywhere else, and so they ended up sanctioning me because I refused to go to the ACC instead of helping move somewhere else. So I ended up, um, using for a couple more weeks and then I went back to detox and, because I just couldn't do it anymore, and then I put myself in a new position, impatient thinking, if I did something for myself, maybe I wouldn't be sanctioned, and when I got out, they still didn't sanction. So I went to DSS and they decided to put me, they said they couldn't pay my emergency housing because I was sanctioned and that cost me too much money, so they didn't give me a room somewhere else. So they placed me on the couch, which I asked them not to do because that's where I had abused for 10 years and that I would be dead if they would. And they said they didn't care, that that's what, that's what they were paying for. So I went to this house and, um, everybody was using drugs and, um, cooking crack and it was coed and I was playing on a bedroom that had no doors. And I went back to DSS and they said they didn't care, they couldn't help me. So I called my mom and I went there for a couple minutes because I didn't know what else to do. And, um, and then I, I had, I called the Lexis for a truth form because I was running out of options, so, so I now have somebody paying for me to live at Hawaii. My mom had a coke home and the house got shut down because I guess boarding houses aren't allowed in the, at the couch, which I think is crazy and that's the reason it was shut down. Not that I don't have doors in my bedroom, you know, and it's a coed house, but, um, so, I, for the next two weeks, I had to, when I am trying to find somebody else to pay for my housing, emergency housing at Hawaii, because they still are paying for me to live in this house that has to be shut down. So even though, it, so they're basically paying for two weeks, so basically we'll get two more weeks back, so then after that, they can help me. And, um, oh, what's the name? Adrian Irons said that my sanction was absolutely ridiculous and got reversed because he shouldn't have never sanctioned me in the first place, that it was completely legit, that it was a conflict of interest, but it's just like, I had to fight for it all this, and if I didn't find out I was pregnant, I normally wouldn't have fought and I would have pissed my nose and said, screw it, you know? So it's just like, I just feel like DSS, like, they don't care. They really don't care. Like, I was begging and pleading and bawling my eyes out and telling them, like, I don't wanna die, I wanna stay clean, I can't be in a drug house, I can't do this anymore. And they basically told me I was, I had no other options. So now I don't know what I'm supposed to do because once I don't have somebody paying for emergency housing and it's back to DSS, like, where are they putting that? My drug house? Like, we're like, I don't know what I'm supposed to do. But that's been my situation for the last couple of weeks and it's just like, really scared because I went fighting with everything I have and I, I don't know what else to do. That's not happening.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing and don't leave without a resource. Um, so maybe we can connect after, but thank you for sharing.
I just wanted to reiterate what she just said. I, um, volunteer at the jail with the women who are incarcerated. Most of them are there on drug charges. And I have girls who repeat and repeat because when they are released and they go to housing where people are using, they're vulnerable. They, I understand that they have choices to make, but when everyone around them is using and they are just vulnerable and they fall and then they get violated and they're back in jail and it's just, there is no safe place for them. This is a really big problem. I'm so sorry for you and that's the kind of stuff that I'm hearing all the time. It breaks my heart and I understand we have all kinds of housing problems, but this one is a big one. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
I guess this should kind of just leads me into why I'm here. I work for the Greater Binghamton Health Center and I work for the Global Integration Team. Um, we get weekly calls. It's always centered around housing. There are always some very, very desperate situations. Um, our main resource is DSS and I'm not gonna trash DSS because they have rules that they have to follow, but when we have someone like her, you know, trying to find a place, we're sent to some outrageous places to put these people in, $400 a month, they can't even survive on. Yet, um, I, I, the boarding homes that I have looked at, I wouldn't put my dog in. This is serious because just because you don't have income or you're poor, you shouldn't have, you shouldn't have to live this way. So I hope, I was my hope when I came here today, that maybe we would figure out something that would help many of our people that, just because, just because they're poor or they've been addicted to a substance, we can't put them in situations that are going to exasperate that situation and that seems to be the group of people that are the most vulnerable.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Velo. I'm a health home care manager with United Methodist Homes. I actually work with people out in the community who are on Medicaid, um, that are ages 55 and up, so they are the most, want, some of the most vulnerable people, both mentally and physically. Um, and I have a lot of complaints, but I'll focus on one and that is, um, homeless prevention. Um, in order to get helped at DSS, which is essentially the only homeless place to go to in Broom County, you have to be homeless. You can't be stored or homeless, you can't like live in a friend's house, you can't have an eviction notice. You have to have nowhere to go that night. And I've gone with other people and they treat you like trash, even if I'm here, I mean, I, I mean nothing, but people look up to me for some reason and they still treat you like trash and, well, do you have the last month's bank account records? And, no, I don't have a car, I have no way to get to the bank. They don't care. And they'll assign you places and I'm someone who really thinks that the punishment is being in prison, not, it should not continue after prison. And there are certain crimes that can be discriminated, first discriminated against through federal funding and so I have a few clients whose only option is to live in the Dixie. I don't know if any of you have been to the Dixie. It is full of bedbugs and sometimes doesn't have heat and it's yucky. And, I mean, there's not much options. When people come to me all the time and I, there's really nowhere to go other than, well, you have to go to DSS and say, I'm homeless, I have nowhere to stay tonight. And that's what I tell people and that's all I can do. Thank you.
Open opportunity, open floor. Right in the back.
Thank you for putting this together, Tina. I primarily work for folks with disabilities and they do are the most vulnerable classes, but also people too, and some of them do have substance use disorder as well, because we were raised on state meds and by the time somebody said, this is not a good idea, um, go to DSS. And I had that same trouble with my own son. Um, I unfortunately was gonna have to ask him to leave, he did his addiction, and I took him down to DSS because I really thought he was fiddled to me, to be honest with you, and I was horrified and how he was treated. They said, and two, you kick him out that door, and I'm picking on me, but this is a lot of consumers that I work for too. Taking him to the King's Inn or the Endicott Inn, if you're a person with developmental disability or people with mental illness, you're targeted. They see you, they know you're coming. People have been raped in there, people have been beat up in there. I had one gentleman who, another guy, took him right out of his wheelchair and threw him on the ground and he didn't have a way to call anybody. You know, he screamed all night and finally somebody did thank him, but he couldn't describe who this attacker was. The person wanted to my brain injury. And, and I know it's hard, I do, I get it, but at the same time, when they're turned away, your next best bet is to go to the riverbank. There are people who still sleep there. Now, I moved here back in 84, I was stung to see how many families were homeless and where they were living, and some of them would rather live in the streets than to live in, in the Dixie or the King's Inn or the Knights of Amish in the King's Inn. Okay, now I'm gonna mail it to you. They don't know his name.
Not individual names, but, but location names, they're got.
And then they got, and Binghamton too, there's some family care homes, they have really heavy concerns. I don't know how they got their licenses. And they take the individual's food stamps that don't really feed them, yeah, they extort that, that's imperative.
Thank you. Others, open floor, concerns from clients if it's not a direct experience.
Hi, my name's Courtney. I work for the Alms Corriging. Um, so we do see a lot, you know, issues with clients being evicted and having to go to DSS, but we see a lot of other issues too that go with housing. Um, you know, our seniors trying to get in, and disabled, our disabled population as well, trying to get into low-income housing. The waitlists are so long that so many of them end up homeless before they are able to get into one of those places, so they end up in a place that they're not happy. Um, accessible housing is a, there's a big shortage of that in our area outside of the senior housing. Um, and also homeowners in the area that would love to be able to stay in their homes but would need body modifications to do so and there's no funding available to assist them. Um, that's a huge one that we see. So many seniors wanna stay in their homes, but they have stairs into their house or they have a bathroom that's on the second floor and so they can't, and where they end up paying for those repairs and then they can't pay their taxes because they paid for those repairs. Um, so we see a lot of that, that stuff, um, people unable to pay a security deposit and can't get funding and then, you know, with temporary assistance for our seniors, it can be hard because if they're on social security, they have to pay it back. Um, so if they do get that benefit, um, you know, requiring them to do that back can be pretty hard on some of our seniors, most of our seniors. Um, and then we also actually are seeing a lack of middle-income affordable housing too. So clients who don't qualify, live in low-income housing, but can't afford the prices that have gone up, you know, in the area, so they need an apartment that's $500, $600 a month and there's no such thing. Um, so that, those are a lot of the concerns that we see with seniors.
From that corner?
Hi, I'm Tina with the Community Options. I'm a service coordinator for the traumatic learning during the Medicaid program. I have a lot of participants, um, who have gone through a lot. They do have to be on public assistance during the time that they develop their TBI, they get released, um, and it takes a long period of time for them to actually get their social security disability awarded to them. So that really puts them in a good two-to-three-year period that it takes them before they actually will get their social security disability and that, living on that very limited income is very difficult for them. Basically, they're either gonna be a room boarder and then they don't qualify for certain programs because they're a room boarder. Um, so, you know, to me, I think that, um, like the lady before me said, you know, there is, um, not enough subsidized housing. There's long waiting lists for these people to get into where they can't afford, um, to pay for rent. Um, the amount of housing that I've been searching for, for a couple of my individuals, it just can't find anything that is affordable, that is suitable for them and safe environment for them to live in. Um, you know, and then there are still those who have, have to have those handicapped, accessible, um, apartments and there's just not, there's just not enough.
Hello, my name is Cynthia. I'm talking about three different situations that I've come over in the last year. One, a person was released from prison, went for a moment, got housing assistance, was sent to work and welfare, but this person had been incarcerated from a teen, youth, but didn't have a lot of work experience, all those soft skills that we've got, helped him to get to life. So, within less than six months, DSS had converted meeting the needs that he should have met and so he was cut off the housing allowances. Well, this individual had other support and was okay, but it just brings to mind hundreds of others who don't have that support. We already know that our jails are disproportionately, um, filled with people of color and all these different little things that I think we need to have our regulations, like you said, DSS has our rules and regulations, but we need to have some go-between, some social worker or somebody that can look at individual cases and make judgments on those. Another situation, a young man's house caught on fire. So this is one of our Alice clients, we would say. Had the house fire, immediately he's homeless. His vision is very, very important, without glasses, he's legal in the line. So they put him in- And there's just not, there's just not enough.
Hello, my name is Cynthia. I'm talking about three different situations that I've come over in the last year. One, a person was released from prison, went for a moment. Got housing assistance, was sent to work welfare. And this person had been incarcerated from a teen to youth, but didn't have a lot of work experience. All those soft skills that we've got, help you to get through life. So within less than six months, DSS had given her the meeting in needs that he should have met. And so he was cut off the housing allowances. Well, this individual had other support and was okay. But it just brings to mind hundreds of others who don't have that support. We already know that our deals are disproportionately good for people of color. And all these different little things that I think we need to have our regulations. Like the woman said, DSS has our rules and regulations. But we need to have some go-between, some social worker, or somebody that can look at individual cases and make judgments on those. Another situation, a young man's house caught on fire. So this is one of our Alice clients, we would say. Had the house fire immediately, he's homeless. His vision is very, very important. Without glasses, he's legally blind. So they put him in a hotel way out, out of Court Street. So he has no clothes, no car, nothing, but they're voucher for him to stay in this place. There's no place for him to eat out there as well. So of course, he stayed there a few days, and that just wasn't working. So then he's no longer staying there, and again, he's been sanctioned. They should look at where you put somebody, how they get in there. And I remind you that this was right about Christmas, it was a week or five days before Christmas, and this person was stuck out there in that situation, without glasses. Red Cross stepped in, as into him. They made breakfast and tried to get his glasses and stuff. But it seems like Red Cross is making some adjustments and looking at the person, you know, putting some humanity to this situation with DSS as well. The third situation, another Alice, I'll say, person. This is a 100% disabled American veteran. So he has an income, he has a significant income. Looking in this community for housing, and I was his helper, and I was helping to work in many, many places. Eventually, he was accepted at 110 Gen. Eng. We filled out the paperwork and all of this, and lots of paperwork. That needs to be looked at, but that's a whole different story. When a person, this person had had five strokes. He had recently had a quenched, and they want you to do these things. So then he finally got in. So like I said, he has the income to live there. Everything else was covered. He had a personal nurse that was going to take care of his meds and everything. Then he was denied, because his credit score was 550. If you have the money to pay, and the apartment has the ability to debit your money, why would you deny somebody because of their past or judgmental money? It's ridiculous.
Thank you. My name's Jennifer, last woman CEO of Broom County Urban League. We do have a rental assistance program. We've dealt with a lot of the same situations. But one of the challenges we have, you know, in the last six years, that grant has gone from $5,000 a month to $1,500 a month. So it's difficult to help a lot of individuals with $1,500. The maximum we can do is 300. One of the challenges that we have found, especially lately, is a lot of the folks that come to us, come to us because they, and they told us, you know, after the landlord has accepted the $300, and it may only be a partial payment, they still get locked out, evicted, kicked out, and they leave with nothing. So then we have the challenge of not only finding a new apartment, but then beds for their children, furniture, and things of that nature. So I guess one of the concerns I have is, what are the other resources, or what information am I missing about how a landlord can actually lock somebody out or kick them out? And are there other resources out there where we can help individuals with furniture, and just basic stuff, if they need to go into a new apartment?
My name is Adam Flint, and I direct an energy programs at the Binghamton Regional Sustainability Coalition. About a year ago, we were funded by NACERDA to work with community groups and environmental justice neighborhoods in the city, to figure out how best to get people access to community shared solar, which is a form of solar where you get bill credits, and you don't need to have property. If it's done right, you don't need to have a house. But we quickly realized this was a very naive pursuit, because we're talking about a situation where maybe they could get a 10% discount. Well, when we're talking about the emergencies, the constant and multiple emergencies that were occurring here, and I've heard them before, and many of you have been hearing them for years, it seems a little silly, frankly, to start with that. So we formed a coalition called Binghamton Community Power. And where we're starting is getting people the tools they need to understand their energy bills to begin with. I'm here to say two things, basically. One is, there needs to be a consideration of access to energy efficiency and renewable energy resources in this picture of housing. Because otherwise, you're A, wasting a lot of the money that you do have, which is not nearly enough, paying exorbitant energy bills. B, you're locking people in if you're replacing old fossil fuel systems with new ones to a form of heating and cooling that frankly, isn't going to be viable in 15 years, which is the life of these things. And I think, lastly, you know, everyone who pays an energy bill is paying into the funds for these NACERDA programs. And to date, the lower income you have, the more energy burden you have, and the less services you're getting for that money from NACERDA. The other thing I wanted to say is that, you know, I've been, I've been following the notes and so forth, and I really am very happy that this effort has started. But I go on to other organizations in the state called the Energy Democracy Alliance. And we have members such as Push Buffalo, that have really come up with, I think, some very good models for how to do what we're trying to do. Part of that has to do with a wraparound approach, because everything's connected. Transportation, housing, jobs, mental health services, on and on and on. But the second thing is, in that organization, the people who live in the neighborhoods are advocating on their own behalf. And I think that if you look at, I'm a recovering academic, George is still in it. But, you know, it's very clear that if the work is exclusively being done by professionals, however well-intentioned, however competent that he may be, you're gonna fall short. So I just really wanted to encourage that you can do that. But again, you know, it's a beginning, and it's good it's a beginning. Part of the bonus, frankly, of having an advocacy organization, we all know we don't have the resources in this community to do, to do what needs to be done. We've faced 45 years of devolution of responsibilities without resources. So clearly, the state of New York and the federal government have kept their responsibilities. And we need to let them know.
Thank you. My name is Mark Bowers, and I just wanted to pick up on what was just said. For the last almost two years, I've been chairing the Binghamton Broom County Poverty Steering Committee. And one of the things that's made that initiative unique, as part of a larger issue out of the governor's office, the Empire State Poverty Reduction Initiative, is that a third of the people on our steering committee here in Binghamton were residents, with lived experience. And that speaks to the point that Adam just made. And over the course of our work together, you know, we identified four focus areas that I'll be preaching about. Two of them, transportation and childcare, just mentioned. Two biggest areas, people gaining and maintaining employment, so that they can afford quality housing. The third issue was the lack of quality affordable housing. The, the trauma and the stress that that brings on people of low income. And, and the third, the fourth was the creation of community empowerment centers, things like the Lee Artist Center, things I could do around the North Mason area, to provide services for people in those neighborhoods, right where they live. So they don't have to travel, and they don't have to worry about childcare. So this idea of quality affordable housing is an economic development issue. And I think we have to make the case for that, just like job training and childcare. Those are economic development issues. And here, with regional economic development councils, and URI, all this money we hear about, it just does not seem like those resources are getting to the community. And I don't think, the decision makers, and I want to, you know, commend Jason for creating this, this task force here to look at this, and the people that he has involved with it. I really understand the issue, and we'll hear later hopefully about the recommendations that they're making. But I think we need to realize, one thing that has struck me over the time of the steering committee, is some of the data that was presented to us over this time. And, you know, I had never heard of Alice previously, okay? The asset limited, income constrained, employed. And when you look at that number of people in Broom County, it's 26% of the people in Broom County are asset limited. These are working people every day, and I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but we need to continue to reiterate this. Because if you take that group of people, and you take the people that are considered living in poverty, that are making less than those federal guidelines, you know, try and raise a family on $25,000. Okay? And when you look at what the work that United Way has done in terms of classifying that Alice group, and looking at their household survival budget. Now, you can have two people working full-time jobs, lucky to make over $30,000, when the United Way's household survival budget for the very basic necessities, your food, and lodging, and childcare, is close to $57,000. So for me, it's unconscionable, okay, that we are in this crisis with the amount of money that gets thrown around, and doesn't seem to be directed. Because I don't think decision makers know these facts. They never sat down with people and tried to understand what, what people are going through in their lives. You know, I have some stuff written down here, and I'm not gonna get into all of it. But one of the things from the Rural Health Network's Rural Broom County Report was interesting. Of 4,000 households, 24%, are cost burdened by the housing. And, you know, Rebecca mentioned that at the onset here. And that's not just urban areas, the issues that we're talking about. Imagine being in Windsor, Whitney Point, in these rural areas where all of the same issues exist, and you have no transportation. The other thing that I-
Rev four minutes.
Okay, okay. The last thing, the last thing I'm gonna mention here is that I'm gonna put Peter on the spot, because he's here, but, you know, I heard a couple of anecdotes, and a principal at Horace and elementary school, and has worked a lot in the neighborhood. And he has told some just sad tales of the impact that the lack of quality affordable housing, as our students, you alluded to, 40% of the kids that have been in school this year move from building to building or out of a building simply because of housing. And the one anecdote, one of his mentors told me the other day, "With all the rain we had, she talked to a young girl, and they were asking, 'What do you think about thunder and lightning? What do you think of storms?'" And the little girl, you know, like, third, fourth grader, said, "Well, I get scared when it rains, because it rains in our house. And when I hear it raining in a house, it sounds like dripping blood." So, you know, I mean, if that doesn't break your heart, and that people are forced, because of the money that they have, job, whatever it is, to live in this, in this house that people are getting paid by the government to rent, and it goes directly to them. I mean, that's just-
Did you, did you want to hit?
Come on, Peter.
I don't think I have a choice.
So Mark put me on the spot. He invited me too, so. I'm just gonna cut to the chase. Kids are my business, and we haven't talked about kids tonight. So I'm the principal of a freshman elementary school in West Arlington. I think you know the challenges we face in this community in terms of how we approach sport, how we approach instruction, and how we deal with students. And I can tell you that we are in a crisis. I'm gonna cut to the chase, but I gotta tell just a couple of, just quick facts, just to let you know that we really need to take action. I think that we have some great things going on in terms of some projects, but at the same time, it's not enough. And if we're gonna really impact this community, we have to start with kids. And if we don't start with the kids, we're just gonna keep spinning wheels. So our day begins with making sure that our kids have enough to eat, that they have, that they can wash their face, they can brush their teeth, we can put a clean shirt on them, and maybe a clean pair of socks. And then, we might be able to start instruction. And so we deal a lot with social emotion with very young kids, K through 5. Just added a TK program, and at the same time, there's just not enough affordable housing. We have kids that are living in houses that are mice-infested, full of bedbugs. We send kids home with bedbugs. That are houses that have bedbugs. And the thing is, is that we have families that really need help. And we're talking about young children. And I think that, you know, I took, looked at some of the material, and it all kind of ties together. I think it was Adam back there, when we talk about the lack of, you know, mental health support we have for kids. The lack of food. And we think about all the food that we have in this community. We have kids that come to school every day, hungry. We have children on Friday that leave with bags for the weekends, and if they have enough food. And so I think the thing is, is that we need more affordable housing. I think, again, just cut to the chase, it's great that we have this task force put together. And I want to thank Jason for putting this together, because we really need to take action now.
Thank you so much.
So I just prefer people that live in public housing. Well, I'm lucky enough to be living there, but I have been in public housing for about 10 years. And I do want to move out of there. And I feel like the reason why the waiting list is so long is because once you're in there, you don't want to get out to have to deal with these landlords that are not taking care of their property. Because at least in public housing, you know, something breaks, you know, something happens, they, they come in right away, and they fix it, they make sure everything is up to standards. So why would I need that situation to move out into the community where I'm not gonna find any real safe, affordable housing, right? So the ideal is, is probably to save money and move into my own home. And how long is that gonna take? Because you're in public housing, maybe because your credit is not right. So you have to build your credit, your transportation, you know, and do those, those basic things to get you to where you need to be to be able to afford a home, and actually sustain yourself, and being able to, you know, live comfortable. So that's one of the reasons I really feel like the housing list is really long, because no one's not gonna want to leave if they're not even stable enough to find a decent place to live and afford it. So I think, you know, we could figure out a policy or a place or something that maybe can help people that do live in public housing transition out, so that way there's room for other people to kind of use those services as well.
I just, I just want to add something to what she was saying. I am a landlord, but not in Broom County, in Hager County. And one of the regulations that we are required to do in Hager County is that it's an occupancy, and I don't know what Broom County rules are, but we have to have an occupancy letter from the code enforcer stating that everything is suitable for you to re-rent that apartment to a tenant. I think that we really need to get down on these landlords to provide good housing by having stricter rules and regulations that have to be put in place. And educate tenants that, ask the landlord, "Do you have an occupancy letter from the code enforcer that they have, you know, went through and certified everything in the apartment in working condition?" I think that we really need to look at it from both standpoints. I think that we really need to be providing these people a decent place for them to live that's affordable for them.
It's just exciting to hear these things, because you have the recommendations and the protocol policies that we're gonna talk about soon. And we're gonna touch on a lot of what you guys are talking about.
So maybe you're gonna touch on this, but I know that we have a land bank in the county. And I know that we're still in some municipalities auctioning off properties, which we shouldn't be doing. We need to have, I don't have the answer, but I know there are people that do. We need to have a system whereby those properties can either be rehabbed or torn down and new built. Where is that money to come from, I can't say. But when you do do those things, make sure that those are energy efficient properties, and that you're running them on something other than gas.
Are there something to share? Open floor.
Hi, my name is Avi. I'm a community member. And I think that one topic, I suppose, that I haven't heard anyone mention yet is the relationship between the community and the university. Because I think that, you know, gentrification is an issue. You know, a lot of the students, and I used to be one as well. I've been a real adult for like five years now. And a lot of the students come up from Long Island and New York City, and they have the money to live in these luxury apartments. And the fact that all of these luxury apartments are cropping up is, is great for the students, but it also affects the price of, you know, the other housing in the city. And I know that there are some landlords- And I know that there are some landlords that will only rent to students because they know that, you know, college students for the most part, you know, I'm painting with a very wide brush here, but a lot of times landlords can take advantage of students because they have lower standards of what their house needs to look like, you know? Like, if you walk into a house where there's five eighteen-year-olds living, it's gonna look different than what a family with children would want to live in. And so, I, you know, I don't know if I have like a recommendation or anything, but I think that, you know, the university is an excellent asset, and I think it adds a lot to the community, but the relationship between student housing and community housing is contentious, I guess, and I think maybe we can figure out a way to sort of use that economic engine to our advantage and not use it to, to make it harder for community members to get accessible, affordable housing because of gentrification.
We are at the end of that forty-minute section, but we were here primarily to hear from you, so I don't wanna cut it short. If you've not heard something said, if you've got a pressing episode, we can definitely go a couple more.
Last comment I wanted to make ties in with people. Young mothers or young couples with two, three children look for three, four days in a apartment. It's like unheard of. I had a young lady two years ago renting a house, nine to be home, then they come to gas, then they drink water. When you're in your family, you can't afford that. She just could not get out of her hole, get the rent quote up, and she's a nine in the night, second next, and the next. She came out of that hole by her parents purchasing a house for her to live in. But majority of our community, they don't have that option. And like she says, we're giving these big spaces to the students because you can put four or five of them in there and get, I guess, two thousand dollars for where we live when a family came before them. So, we need to, like she said, welcome them into the community, but maybe we need to zone certain areas, certain number of houses on a particular block, something that we can think about young families, even when they talk about this new multi-use housing building across from our old Kmart. This could be multi-use, we're gonna have one or two bedroom apartments in there. You're not talking about families, are you?
Hi, my name is Hallen Martha, I'm a community senior snack eater for three oh three main street at Horace. Just to echo what has been said, I'm also a landlord and apartment owner in Hager County. I know that, you know, I look around the room and people are like rolling their eyes because they don't really want to have code enforcement go through every time a family leaves a building. However, you have families in Banhamton that, they're routing from place to place, and if they report the landowners, the poor landowners that rent the place, they're gonna get dropped kicked out the door. And so, now they're back in that same cycle of getting moved to another bad place by another landlord, and then they're in trouble. Now, they have kids, and they're all on the street, and it's the middle of winter, and I had probably six people that came to my office within the last three weeks that had been kicked out of their apartment in freezing cold weather. Now, there's a lot of social issues that go along with that, but a lot of them come to me and they say, "We can't live like this." And we've had people that have been reduced, be picked up by the ambulance because their living situation is so bad, they're afraid of getting sued if something happens or getting hurt. So, if you have that code enforcement letter, then you're holding somebody else responsible. The tenants do not feel afraid because every time somebody moves out, they have to get that letter. Somebody has to go in and look at that place. And it's not gonna be a spotless transition, however, you know it's safe, you know-
It's up to code.
It's up to code, and that they have the things that they need.
Are there's anyone to share?
I'm sorry to make you awkward. Hi, everybody, I'm an attorney with Legal Services of Central New York. I deal with the end result of everything that you're kind of talking about. People come in complete crisis here. I've only been up here in Grove County for a year, but practiced down in Brooklyn doing attorney for children work, so dealt with all of these issues just on a different level. In Brooklyn, where they have a lot more protections for housing than they do up here, there's literally a bifurcation, I guess, New York City laws about housing and then just state laws, which is a really big problem. One thing that I didn't hear mentioned, and I just wanted to mention is, with code enforcement, what we're talking about, my understanding is that a lot of landlords, if they, private landlords, so if they bring their place up to code, it might change the assessment, their taxes don't go up. And so, the way that a lot of people have been going around it is by starting these rent-to-own contracts. I don't know if anybody has heard of them around here, they're really huge, they're coming into my office all the time now. They're really problematic because tenants put down a lot of money, and then they take on all of those responsibilities of paying taxes, taking care of major, major issues like foundation, we're talking about heating. The landlord is not responsible for any of that, and pursuant to the contract, they're allowed upon one default to evict these people after deposits are put down on these homes, their homes. They don't do inspections because they don't know. The contracts are signed so quickly because you have to get the property into their name as quickly as possible. They don't actually have title, and this is a really big issue that we're starting to look into around here. There's mills all over the country that are doing this to communities just like ours all over the country, and a lot of people are starting to look into it. New York State has tried to pass legislation to really break order to this crisis, but it's something that is, that's also happening, and it's connected, really connected to this issue.
I guess, I guess I just wanted to share my experience real quick, and I guess if nobody else has anything, we'll finish after myself. Basically, what I see, when we go into a house, the tenants are not protected by a lease. Typically, there's no paper that's signed, so in New York State, you're automatically put on a thirty-day, month-to-month lease. What ends up happening is regardless of what happens, if there's code infractions, if there's blood banks paint found on the property, if you call somebody from one of those organizations, the landlord probably will get upset, and what they'll do is they'll give you a thirty-day notice. So, on the first of the next month, you've got thirty days to find another place. What ends up happening is now you're panicking because you have thirty days or forty days to move, and you start calling around. You have no way to go look at the house, so you decide that you're gonna rent it sight on scene. You bring your family, you move into the new house, and it's just trashed. You're moving into a place that was trashed by the previous tenants. The landlord's standing there and he says, "Well, you can take it, or what I'll do is I won't charge you a security deposit." "Okay, well, that sounds good to me. You're gonna have to clean it up, you're gonna have to paint it, I promise you I'm gonna fix the refrigerator, I promise you I'm gonna fix the front steps." And you basically move in because you got no other option. Come to the end of the month, so, once again, no leases signed, there's no protection. So, two months down the road, the refrigerator's still broke, the front vanister's broke, you have all these issues, and you finally call the landlord out and say, "You know what? I'm gonna call code enforcement if you don't come and help us out." Landlord says, "Okay, you know, go ahead, I promise I'll be there in two weeks." They don't show up in two weeks, you call code enforcement, code enforcement shows up, they write the violations, next thing you do, get in the mail, you get a thirty-day notice to move out. It's a continual cycle over and over, and that's primarily what we see as far as helping neighborhoods.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
When code enforcement writes that out in Grove County, how do they follow up with that?
I'm gonna shoot you in the hip just because I know a little bit about it, just to be dangerous. If I'm way off, just let me know. So, typically, and this comes down from the state, regardless of the violation, unless it's imminent danger, you're gonna get thirty days to fix it, something like that. If there's an imminent danger, it almost has to be fixed immediately or the house will get cut down. So, depending on what it is, a letter is created, they send it to the landlord, letting them know what the violations were found, and then they get the thirty days to fix it. They go back after that thirty days, and they do a re-inspection of all the violations that they found. When certain things haven't been fixed, then it gets pushed from their office to the judiciary branch of, I don't know, what court sees that?
It's legal, Binghamton City Court.
City Court, yeah.
And so, are they allowed to rent that still while they're pending?
As far as I know.
All right, so, that's a really good question, right? Hi, I'm Sharon.
If you've ever been in a room with her, I don't think she needs a microphone.
Hi, I'm Sharon Sorkin. I am our Assistant Corporation Counsel for the City of Binghamton. I also bring with me about ten years of advocacy rep for tenants who are working for in low income through legal services, South Korea. So, the way that generally works is New York State's super protective of your property rights, super protective of your ability to use your property the way you want it, right? So, the question is, does DSS have to pay you landlord? No, they don't. It's a stop rent, it's spiegel, that amount gets released to you once you've done those repairs. As a person with an entitlement, however, because it's my benefit that I'm getting from the state that I've earned based off of my eligibility, right, and things like Alice, metric, et cetera, I get to choose where I wanna live, and I get to take that money with me. And so, even if DSS has a stop rent, do I get to still live there if I want to, and you're the sophisticated landlord and I wanna rent smaller? Yeah, I do. So, the question is, does the landlord still get to rent that? Maybe yes, right? Do they get the money back then? Maybe not, right? Especially if there's a stop rent and spiegel. But those are big questions, and I would just follow up to Mark's point, which is, or to your question, which is, Grove County doesn't administer our Office of Code Enforcement. Binghamton City administers the City Office of Code Enforcement, Village J. C. administers the Villages, and so on. There are larger things countywide that could be done, like no longer discriminating against people based on their source of income. Okay, so there are countywide initiatives that we can do, but some things are gonna be locally based.
And do you think that's a perfect segue to start looking at some of the recommendations that have been discussed at the task force level? These are very much all in draft form, so up for revision, absolutely up for input. And again, like Mark said, just wanting to know that the pulse is correct, that we're tracking the issues. I mean, and everything that has been mentioned this evening has been a part of some of those discussions. So, really, just in jumping to some of you, and we may jump around a little bit just based on the level of the topics that came up, but this first slide is really here for a reason. We wanted to make sure that in, so we talk about stability, we talk about equality, and we talk about affordability. As a group, the consensus absolutely from the beginning is that we didn't want to target one aspect of the broader housing issue that could potentially detrimentally impact another aspect of, didn't want to implement enforcement or punitive measures that could potentially cut out housing choice that's already so limited for extremely low-income households. So, we're trying to kinda take a comprehensive collective view as we're discussing each aspect. Again, our very first outcome has been the need to really prioritize protections for the lowest-income renters across the county. Couple of recommendations that we have begun to put together, and this has been mentioned, source of income legislation. So, right now, if you, if you're an African-American, if you are a woman, if you have a family, there are protected classes within your housing, laws in the state that make it illegal for a homeowner or landlord to reject renting to you based on those classes. In Grove County and in New York State, source of legal income is not one of those protected classes. So, what that means is that a landlord could choose not to rent to a household based solely on the fact that they are a recipient of DSS public assistance or Section Eight housing choice vouchers. So, that takes where we're seeing affordability already drastically limit access to housing locally. Without that protection, it's double jeopardy. And I understand that, I'm sure if I'm using that term right, but it felt like if they could-
Legal, yes.
Legal, yes. So, already, the households we've identified as the most vulnerable, the households all of you have brought up, and that we see kind of cycling through, certainly, we've got emergency shelter staff here this evening, the household that we see cycling through emergency shelter, and having to access some of those hotels that we've talked about, already the most vulnerable locally, and really the largest increase that we're seeing among homelessness and housing instability are with families. Very often, a single mom with young kids. So, it's true, starting with children is actually losing one of those protections we need to consider. So, that source of income legislation will broaden protections while simultaneously broadening access to housing choice for extremely low-income families locally. Any feedback on that? This is totally participatory, so yeah.
Okay, so my question is, is that the, who, what kinds of landlords are being targeted? Because when you say that, it sounds like you're trying to, like, none of the stories there were landlords who were not accepting people, not discriminating in that way, they were people who were, like, I imagine you're trying to open other, better units to these people, but I suspect their income levels, and I just don't know how the system works. So, I don't know how that would necessarily help. Can you maybe explain a little more?
Sure, so the wrong theme certainly was access to affordable housing and availability of affordable housing. So, there are apartments that are available and portable where landlords are saying they just prefer not to rent to a DSS or to a clientele. And so, and we do have to look at it a couple of different ways, and we'll get to some of this, but developing strategically, new affordable housing, new construction, rehab, things like that, funding sources that are coming down from the state, those are absolutely all in the mix in terms of an affirmative approach to expanding and increasing access to housing choice.
Okay, no, it's fine, thank you, I get it. Thank you.
Rebecca, the legislation at what a government level is that? I mean, given we live in Grove County with, I think, sixteen towns, seven villages in one city, all with their own governments, at what level can we implement legislation that would address that?
The ideal for Grove County would be to implement it at the county level. This has been introduced at the state level, it's currently in committee, so our recommendation would include an encouragement to have that progress to the floor calendar, which actually mimics EBOP's Housing Policy Committee's recommendation. So, at the state level, if this cycles through, goes on the floor calendar, is discussed and is passed at the state, obviously that would trickle down, but very specifically, we would be looking at mimicking, there's a couple of counties in New York State that have passed source of income legislation.
All right, do you know all those counties?
Nassau, Westchester, and Suffolk.
I just wanna clarify, I don't know if I heard you say, has there been also discussion on the mixed-use housing mixed neighborhoods? Because I know there's a ton of studies that have been done, you know, low-income families, middle-income families, and high-income families, when they all live together in safer neighborhoods, you know, these lower-income, middle-income, tend to do- you know, these lower-income, middle-income tend to do better because it was safer, you know, more attractive neighborhood.
Inclusionary zoning.
Oh, I need to put my glasses on, I can't see.
No, that's okay. You're speaking, showing inclusive communities. And absolutely, mixed-use would be the ideal. And there's another slide or two where this pops up in terms of developing strategically in a way that's effective. But yeah. The, oh, Adam?
Just real quick, is the legislation that you were talking about simply part of the same package or different from what I've heard discussed in terms of expanding the kinds of protections that exist in New York City statewide? Is that all the same thing, or is that different things?
It's different. It's related, but it would be different. It would be specific to Broom County. I think as we go down, there's probably a couple of other things that roll into, sort of, to jump. I mean, we've heard a lot about how eviction, not only, I mean, not only are you looking at an immediate crisis in terms of being displaced, but eviction very often perpetuates continued housing instability. Because you've got the crisis where they need to find housing, they move into a spot that's low-quality, and then they're constantly looking for the next. So in terms of eviction prevention, there are a couple of things already happening around the county. What we wanted to focus on at the core group level, just because we have the representatives around the table, was the capacity for DSS to potentially improve protocol when it comes specifically to Spiegel law, which is rent withholding. And Sharon mentioned and referenced a bit, there's not a broad knowledge, certainly, among providers, even at the community level, among tenants, that Spiegel law exists. It's really the only mechanism within New York State Office of Disability Assistance directives that permit Departments of Social Services to address the habitability of the apartments that their rental assistance programs support. So Sharon alluded to, Spiegel law means that if the code confirms that there's a situation that is detrimental, that is dangerous or hazardous to the health of the occupants, and it's being funded through a grant received from the Department of Social Services, code can confirm that to DSS. DSS has the capacity to then stop rent. So that landlord is not receiving those rental payments. Not only is there very limited awareness of Spiegel, there's been some inconsistencies in terms of what Spiegel looks like at the civil court level. So the one piece that we're working toward accomplishing in partnership with DSS has been typically just a notice went out that had a couple of lines saying rent's being withheld, and that was primarily it. So what we revised, that notice to read is a section for the landlord and a section for the tenant. They clarified to the landlord that Spiegel law institutes a, it's a defense that is illegal to evict an individual or a household when a stop rent is issued based on hazardous conditions in the house. So we clarified that for the landlord and also clarified the Spiegel law itself. And then for the tenant, very specifically in that notice, we're letting them know that rent is being withheld. We're identifying legal aid and legal services resources should their landlord move to evict, so that they know who they can contact and what they can have with them if that landlord does still pursue an illegal eviction. So that's just one piece of kind of what we've deliberated at the task force level, and we're close to being able to push that. Any other, any thoughts on that? Any thoughts on, I mean, we heard a lot about eviction. There are eviction prevention programs that are happening in partnerships with legal services and legal aid. Some community embedded, some accessible through homeless prevention programs. And I think one thing that has really come up is just there, we talk a lot about resources. And there are a lot of resources, we just don't really know what they are and what they do. So, let's see. One of the pieces that we really wanted to target is supporting both property owners and landlords, the tenants, with a centralized resource page. The county has committed to making that available on their website, and that's being developed. But just something that will really centralize resources for both groups and be fully accessible for folks that are facing some of these issues. And Stattney, if you want, if you, I'm gonna stay close to the mic, which is a little weird for me, but I'm gonna walk around. The, so in terms of prioritizing protection, we've again talked about, where do people go? And for the lowest-income households, they're not the ones that are making the complaints because they know it's very likely that they will face an eviction. So that fear is very real, and we don't want to put the onus on families and households already facing such hardship. So one recommendation that we've discussed is expanding fair housing coverage. So we already have legal services, Central New York, we have legal aid locally, and they assist with eviction proceedings. But what we don't have is a broader, more comprehensive fair housing coverage entity that includes not only investigative and litigation support, but trainings for tenants and landlords and providers on what their rights are here in Broom as opposed to in the city. And when I say investigative, I mean, these are entities that will implement tests to identify discrimination locally. So especially if we're looking to increase some legislation to provide protections, we want to make sure that we have really the enforcement mechanism to back that up. CNY Fair Housing covers several of the regions north of us when it comes to fair housing. They do some training work down here. They have an arrangement with the City of Binghamton for training. The Southern Shore Homeless Coalition has worked with them on a couple of initiatives as well. But the goal would be to expand that coverage to make some of these investigative pieces and litigation support pieces really available to the full county. Any thoughts on, feel free to throw comments out as we go. Okay, and so in terms of prioritizing protections, also inclusionary zoning. So we've talked about development. We've talked about not enough, I think is the word, the two words that we heard probably most frequently. There's just not enough available affordable housing. One of the things that we know, and this is from the county's most recent housing report, is that we've effectively met demand for student housing, or at risk of exceeding.
You think?
Yep, we needed a report to tell us that.
Thanks, Bob.
But we, so we, you know, at risk of exceeding demand for students, I appreciated the documentation issue and the relationship with university piece that was brought up. More so, we also know that once some of these adaptive reuse and plans that are in the works or have already broken ground, like 50 Front, like some of the shenanigans houses pieces, we know that once those are completed, we will effectively met demand for high-end luxury housing as well. So the recommendation in the county's housing report was really to target the development of market-rate housing. At the core group level, we really feel like that we're looking, I mean, we're looking at a population across Broom County experiencing economic hardship at rates of 50% and 60% in some municipalities, and we feel that really targeting development for extremely low-income levels and very low-income levels is the key. So not just market-rate housing, but low-market rate housing. And that's where some of the mixed-use pieces come in because we can talk, how is cost prohibitive to turn a profit for a developer if they're just going to focus on rents that are $350 to $450 a month? Sure, pair it with a mixed-income model. So inclusionary zoning, in particular, what it would do is, there's a couple of different ways that it can be done. Basic inclusionary zoning would just look like reserving a percentage of new development for extremely low-income households. So if a project developer comes to the city municipality, county planning department, and is identifying their desire to build, that inclusionary zoning ordinance would require that between, the average is between 5 and 25, or average is about 15%, but would be reserved in that new development for extremely low-income and very low-income renters. So again, we're prioritizing this population we've identified as most in need and most vulnerable, and we are potentially reserving pilots or reserving some of those incentives for developers that are saying they're going to target this population as well. Yes?
Are you also looking at homeownership for low-income people versus just consistently renting? Because that's not helping them economically. That's not going there for them to constantly rent. I've been renting for 41 years and I could be put out tomorrow. I've been in the same apartment 41 years. So I think that there's also some funds available for homeownership, and we don't talk about that enough. And that's important.
Yeah, I think one of the mechanisms that communities use, Syracuse probably being one of five examples, is through the land bank, they've teamed up with financial institutions, non-for-profits, the City of Syracuse and the land bank to provide low-income housing at a discounted rate with the understanding that they might have to do some sweat equity to the house, that if they went through some homeownership programs, they wouldn't be able to qualify for that. If landlords lived on the same street, so they're of the community, they would have the ability to purchase that house and then rent it to low-income people. So there are mechanisms out there as far as homeownership. And I think truly, that's the way to bring back some of these communities, is to lower the rental rates and increase the homeownership because they're gonna be there, and the kids are gonna know the kids, and the parents are gonna know the parents. And that's, I feel, from the communities that I've gone through, there's just such a loose sense of community. And it's across the board. It's out in Conklin, it's out in Lisle, it's, we need to bring that sense of community back.
I get you.
Yeah, I am Margaret with the Broom County Land Bank, and I wanted to address on that. Primarily, we're probably known as taking down many high-snores in the community, but once you take down, you need to start replacing. And we've turned our focus, while we have limited inventory and limited resources, we have turned the focus towards rehabilitation. And our intent is to focus on establishing homeownership to do exactly what you guys were rooting to, is to help stabilize and reinvigorate communities. And so we will be having some of home in the next couple of years for the purpose of core development.
You know, I just have to put in a smoke, Josephine, because she's here. Because I've been working with Josephine on her project to create, build tiny homes, you know, 7, 800s, single floor, as a pathway to homeownership for low-income people that when you take down these properties and you have these vacant lots, we can create pocket neighborhoods. And Josephine Burrell, as in front of you right there, has been championing this idea. So we should probably have a conversation because it will be a great way for you to help participate in that project. And it's new.
Yeah, so I mean, in no way does the task force at all or itself is kind of the end-all. I mean, we absolutely recommend there are several groups that are promoting and now are similar things and other aspects that will impact the issue you've covered on.
So I don't know if you're also, I mean, we've spent a lot of time raising questions. I don't know if you're looking for endorsement of these things as well. So I think all three of those ideas are good, the lower three. The first one as well, but I commented earlier on that. I think all these ideas are good. I do worry that the inclusionary zoning idea may have passed its time because, and you know the market better than I do, but you just said, we're done with students, and we're done with the luxury homes, the people who make all the money. Who will we be including in the inclusion, who will be building the homes that we put the inclusionary zoning requirement on? I say go for it anyway, but I don't know that that's gonna help so much because of where you present the market might be. And again, I could be wrong. And I think you're gonna get to it because you jumped ahead a little bit. But I think we should be putting more emphasis on the nonprofits who are doing things like the tiny homes, but also like the First Word Action Council. And thinking, you know, getting more money into them because they provide good quality.
Yeah, I just want to follow on George's point. I think inclusionary zoning, I'd hate it to be a red herring where we have to invest a lot of political capital for policy change that is going to provide very little dividends. The goal of the mixed-income and inclusive community is great, but in soft markets, there's not a single community in all of New York State outside of the metro area that has passed the inclusionary zoning amendment. Albany has voluntary. And so if we're going to focus on it, I think we look at what the, again, the investment, first return, and as you know, it's rental inspections that 13, and minimum 13 communities all across the New York State have implemented it successfully, as well as ending the tax foreclosure auction. And from both of those, those are foundational policies that you can then stitch together many other programs and policies and in fact achieves many of the goals that we already outlined. So I would just caution against inclusionary zoning as a practice.
Thank you. Just in the interest of time, we'll keep going, but definitely keep throwing out those thoughts. And I wanted to, I mentioned we might skip around a little. So when we talk about landlord engagement and responsible referral mechanism, when we talk about municipal involvement in the county tax foreclosure auction process, that's been touched on, and partnerships to build permanent supportive housing. So these are all aspects that have come of this evening. I think starting with the municipal involvement in the county tax foreclosure auction process. So we have heard from several core group members that have identified their concerns with what they feel is a perpetuation of core investment when it comes to the county's tax foreclosure auction process. It's been mentioned that there's no betting of, there's certainly, and there's a cost impact to it, but there's also a community impact. And so what core group members have definitely had consensus on is that there's an opportunity with the county's tax foreclosure auction process to provide a platform for whether it's the Broom County Land Bank, whether it's municipal code offices and planning departments, whether it's regional nonprofits, and actually, we think it's all of them, to be involved in the conversation about what happens with those foreclosed properties, and in terms of strategic development, what could be done on that. So Margaret mentioned demolition, getting rid of light, absolutely necessary, but then what do you do with those vacant properties? We do believe that there are models, actually, that already exist in the county where parcels are transferred from the county to a municipality, the demolition is taken care of by a funding source, a nonprofit comes in to commit to new development for extremely low-income individuals or formerly homeless. So we think those models are worth continuing. So that's absolutely a piece of it. And really giving, again, municipalities the opportunity to be involved in those conversations rather than just putting the list of properties to be auctioned off out, you know, with just a couple of days' notice. So that's certainly something. Brian?
I'm Brian Daniels, I'm the coordinated entry director. I make a lot of phone calls for two, and one for families who are facing eviction at home. But I have a question. Is there any thought on buildings, like say, the Toys R Us building being converted into apartments for families?
We've not targeted that property specifically. It's definitely, and I think our hope is to kind of leave that to make the broad recommendation and leave those specific potential developments to the municipalities and to the nonprofits. Many of you may know that there is a funding coming down from the state consistently in the past few years, whether it's the Empire State Support Housing Initiative funding for supportive services that can be paired with capital funding through HAGP from the state. We really are seeing an increase in funding for the development of supportive and permanent housing. So again, it's just the strategic application of those. And we would leave it. And we would leave it to the municipalities to kind of, to end the nonprofits to develop those projects. So that kind of covers those two. I do want to, I'll mention, so landlord engagement and responsible referral mechanisms, one thing that we've talked about, is how we don't have what we would call a comprehensive responsible referral mechanism for extremely low-income households looking to find an affordable and habitable apartment. The Department of Social Services does have a list of vendors that will allow DSS recipients to rent from them. And that's primarily the only thing in existence in terms of kind of funneling folks in a particular direction. So we feel like the development of a more responsible referral mechanism will be necessary. But again, we want to make sure that we're prioritizing those protections and expanding that simultaneously. To, I'm just looking at time here. So some of the, and these are actually in order for a reason. There's been discussion about inspections, about certificate of occupancy and certificate of compliance ordinances, the effectiveness that has been demonstrated in improving quality elsewhere throughout the state when we look at a proactive code enforcement model as opposed to proactive as opposed to reactive where it's driven by solely complaints made by renters. That was one of the things that we really started with in terms of addressing quality. What came from those initial discussions was a consensus that the, there are some barriers that would need to be addressed and broken down prior to effectively implementing some of those ordinances. One of them being that local code offices are restricted by the amount of data that is shared and identifying accurate property owner information and accurate property information in order to pursue some of the enforcement activities that are required. So in order to strengthen code enforcement capabilities, the recommendation will be for the county to consider intermunicipal data sharing agreements that lessen some of those restrictions. And then when we talk about integrating the database, each of the municipalities are restricted to their own, whichever program, whichever platform for collecting data and keeping data that they use. The consensus from code and planning officials in core group discussions has really been that to, again, strengthen code enforcement capabilities and identifying accurate and complete information, integrating databases across the county would be helpful. I know that gets a little, gets a little technical.
So this is great, this is a good idea. I'm trying to remember, I thought those are town somewhere, it might even have been in New York, where they actually post the contact information on the apartment. Like, so someone has to be able to be reachable. Does that not work? Is that part of this? Because I don't see where you're saying, you know, there's a local agent or there's the owner, something is there. There has to be some, you know.
One of the things that we've talked, have you ever looked at the GIS system? This part of Brune County is concerned. If you ever want to know who owns a house, you can go on gobrunkcounty.com, you can click on their GIS map. They have a nice interactive map and you can click on the property and find out who owns it. Find out how much they pay in taxes, who their fire district is, all these graded things as far as information. What you'll see a lot with the rentals is you'll have 124 and a half Henry Street LLC, P.O. Box 88, Brooklyn, New York, or Albany, New York, there's connected. You don't know who owns it, you don't know where they live. And one of the things that we're really trying to look for with this database is putting a name and an address that would be accessible by different municipalities, DSS, it would be the Health Department, Code Enforcement, Water. So we could start to, instead of sending something to a P.O. Box and it get kicked back, send it to a P.O. Box and it get kicked back, is that we can call them, we can send something to them so it can start the process to improve the housing that's already there.
So you require that all landlords in the city be, enter a real phone number on the database, right?
The goal would be county-wide in terms of, because one of the limitations to collecting that information is it's based on what that landlord or property owner gives you. So the data is only as good as the, looking for a word, honesty of the individual who's reporting it. And so we want to kind of take that variable out by pulling together assessors office information, a court's data information that fully represents a property, again, to give that capability over to code.
I just recently had a situation where I was advocating for a young woman in recovery who went straight from a rehab to social services, got put in a house where there was multiple illegal things going on. So I ended up getting in contact with a multitude of people the next day. And code enforcement was one of them. And code enforcement told me that this boarding house that she was put in is not a boarding house. It is not registered in the town as a boarding house. It's only a two-bedroom house and there was already two people living in that house she was at it. And that boarding houses are not even allowed in the village of Ednacon. So in my advocating for her, I finally got ahold of somebody at social services that I was told who was the person that needed to know this information about this landlord who treated me the same way that these people get treated when they walk into that office. Basically, it was, that's not my department, I don't know who you go to. But we, exact words, we do not inspect these houses. So you just send people to, I can come in and say, I'm a landlord and I have six bedrooms and you can send me six people and I can collect six rents and start putting them in basements and closets and sheds out back and that's unacceptable, that's unacceptable.
I just want to hit that point for clarification. I thought that was unacceptable too. Last year, when we really started to dig into this stuff, we, I said, why don't we just inspect all the homes that we provide rental assistance to? The issue with that is it's illegal under state law. We can't target a class of people. So that.
Correct.
That's why I advocate for municipalities to do, you know, inspections across the board. And that way we can share information with them, but we can't target the class of people. And that's, that's one of the reasons why I was so frustrated and created this thing in the first place. Because there's so many.
Right.
Different laws, as you were saying, that protect, which are, I think, good detention laws. But when it slows down to local municipalities, then it's frustrating to work around.
And it's definitely a question of who would use the onus of that, the quality on. And you mentioned Department of Social Services, there is no existing mandate within state directives that govern the F S that require them to at all look at the habitability of the apartments that folks are renting. And so that state directive doesn't exist.
That would be the state.
So, right, so any change in DSS regulations would have to be made at the state level. The county does not have the capacity to impose eligibility restrictions.
Right.
On DSS recipients. So that would be a state level piece. But as Jason was saying, every municipality has the opportunity to take ownership of the quality of the apartments that are available in their region. And some of what's been discussed, and really where we started, is how can the county support municipalities? Executive governors, you know, really committed to how can the county look at supporting local municipalities in? And it's going to take, it's going to take several different approaches, I think, with different potential in each region.
And so I don't know if we'll get to this, but one approach, because you hear a lot about how DSS has not been sympathetic. And I know we've probably heard the worst stories there, and I'm sure there's great people within DSS. But maybe there's also some.
Some of us sit here, George.
No, I'm sure, okay. I only know people like that. But I mean, we hear these stories about it. And so maybe there needs to be some, you know, ability to transmit to people who are working on the front lines, you know, that you can use, either use, I mean, I don't want to say common sense because you have rules, but you, you know, that there can be more sympathy or more steering or something that has to do so that, or, and you can tell me if it's just a small handful of people who are just bad eggs and we just happen to hear about them. But it's, we just hear about that over and over again. And I feel like there's a human component that we should be getting at as well.
Can I say one thing? I'm not DSS, I'm the opposite of DSS. I used to sue DSS, I'm literally the opposite of them. What I will say about this cadre of people sitting back here is that they really do care.
Oh, I have no doubt.
They really do. The fact of the matter is they cannot increase the housing stock on their own. And when they have a two-page list of landlords in this entire county who are willing to rent to the working poor and low-income, they're not happy about saying that that person has to live in a rooming house with one room. The fact of the matter is their benefit is $180 a month from the state, right? You don't have mental health institutions, that was cut. So they have $180 and that has to go to their housing, their food, their medical for their whole month. They're bad news bears, right? They don't get to give good news. So as much as I think Rebecca's saying, how does the county help municipalities? How do municipalities also then help you? Because if we continue to point the finger around the room about who cares about the poor more, the only people who lose are the poor.
Okay, no, I get that, honestly, and I don't need to point too many fingers. I do like, I have a lot of them. It's just, it's just the stories that you hear. I just want to sort of think about that part too. And again, is it something that you're addressing and you just, when you hear the attitude of people? And again, I guess when you're poor, you're probably like hearing the worst. You know, everything you take in gets translated from your DSS person to the worst possible. But that's just sort of what I was hearing, so I don't.
Thank you.
I don't get a lot of people that call DSS and go, thank you. So they call DSS when they're in crisis, right? So if they're coming to DSS, it's not because they're in a good place. So I hear you. And there is a lot of negativity that comes out of the building, I agree with you. But you have to remember where these folks are coming from.
Yes.
They're coming from a place that's not good and we're, and if we say to the word no, so you've got no, you know, not a good place and no.
And that's really where the landlord engagement and responsible referral mechanisms that our foundation has played a role. So if we can give DSS a more responsible referral mechanism by engaging with landlords to increase those who are willing to rent to DSS recipients, well then we've affirmatively addressed, it's not a whole solution. But we've begun to, again, expand housing choice by engaging at a community level. And then DSS no longer has to rely, and honestly, providers too. I mean, there's no, there's no other list. I am extremely sorry to say, because I hate using that list. There's no other list that exists. These are the landlords that will rent to DSS recipients and that's it. And there's a dozen. I mean, so I think that's definitely been an aspect where if we can offer that by the municipality or as a provider to DSS. And there are a number of homelessness prevention and rapid rehousing programs that are engaging with landlords and having success. And again, I think that's where we centralize those resources at a county website level to kind of point people in better directions.
And that kind of ties in with the proactive code enforcement. In a perfect world, we'd be like Toyota where anytime somebody moves out of a rental property, code enforcement's called, they go there, they do an inspection, and then they get a stamp saying, you can now occupy this. It would be great, I work for the Health Department, so we do restaurant inspections, we do swimming pools, things like that. It would be nice to post a occupancy form right on the front door. This is the owner, this is his number, and this is when it was inspected. So if you're going to look at that house, you know, boom, it was inspected. It should be safe for me to move into. Now we look at the landlord list. Well, if we can't do this county-wide, maybe what we can do is we can convince landlords who will be vendors for DSS, we will put you at the top of the list. We will get rid of everybody else if you're willing to do occupancy inspections for your units. So we know at least if people are moving in crisis, we can have a good list that's out there with people that are willing their houses to be inspected.
Excuse me, Howard Schultz, I'm an attorney with Social Services Department. There's, as County Executive Coroner indicated, Rebecca alluded to, there's kind of a disconnect of the nuance of what the reality of this is. When individuals come into Social Services Department and apply for temporary assistance, they get a shelter grant for their shelter, for their need. It's a calculation, it's a ministerial act based on their eligibility. The quality of the housing, the choice of the housing, is not the Social Services Department. So you really wrap your head around that. It's under, the way it is in New York State, the quality of the housing would fall, as has been alluded to here, but somehow DSS gets in the mix of this and I get that. But it's really not capturing reality. It's the code enforcement offices that provide for the standards of the housing. Now, what has been alluded to here is the Spiegel Act. And I've been doing this a long time and Brune County has often plugged with the Spiegel Act. But currently, there's vigorous enforcement. The Social Services Department for over 30 years has had vigorous Spiegel Act enforcement built in Brune County. And Spiegel Act for the Social Services Department is discretionary. It doesn't even have direct approval legally, but it always has and will. Because every commissioner of Social Services has been real advocates for the Spiegel Act. And what the Spiegel Act does is when that assistance recipient, again, through their free will, they're adults, they decide where they want to live, not the Social Services Department, okay? And when they end up in substantial housing, if the code enforcement is vigorous and reports back to the Social Services Department those code violations, the Social Services Department does not have to legally withhold the rent to the landlord. But in Brune County, the Social Services Department will always withhold the rent to the landlord. And then what that does is it forces the landlords to ameliorate those code violations, to correct the property. And then Social Services to encourage the contact with landlord when the property is ameliorated, back into code, Social Services Department will pay the landlord, the assistance recipients, entitled that shelter allowance, that rent. But the DSS, and I've sat here and listened to these comments and I must, it has to be spoke to. Because if you think in these terms, you're just not thinking reality. The Social Services Department does not tell people where to go and live when they're doing these assistance plans. Now, DSS does have a list that was alluded to of landlords, but that's because there's so little availability for people at indigent level, assistance recipients in Brune County, that it would be that or homelessness, right? So that's an available list, so people aren't sleeping in the streets, so people aren't in the shelters. That's what's available. And with vigorous code enforcement, that, those properties will at least be up to minimal standards. And that's the reality of this housing stock situation. And what Rebecca alluded to before, I, along with other people, drafted a revised notice so that when we do the Spiegel Act violations, and again, there's a continuity, still hunted Spiegel Act record volumes in place within Brune County. Because there's a lot of violations, you know, within the county. So we revised the notice to basically put the eviction prevention protocol, what that is, is it states the law to the landlord and to the recipient that they cannot be evicted in defense to eviction. And we put in the legal.
Further DSS portion.
Exactly correct.
But they can be evicted further out of.
Yes, and we addressed that as well, that we give the numbers to the legal services of Central New York and Legal Aid of Central New York. And if they're paying any portion, as has been alluded to by Sharon, if they're paying any portion that's not DSS, we have a few sentences in there on that, that they should retain that fund, so, and speak to legal services to term this. So if the property does come back into compliance and the landlord then holds them responsible for a down portion of the rent, that they have the foresight to save. that they would have the foresight to save that money so they could avoid the eviction. So that's a small, large thing.
We're at just, we're at just under 10 minutes. And so what I want to make sure we have the opportunity to do, and again, we want a multi-cassid, dense issue. Going to take everybody, going to take a lot of different approaches. But the, we're at just under 10 minutes for the scheduled timeframe of the forums. Would want to make sure that we're doing two things before we end. The first one, kind of hearing, and I know time is limited, but what aren't we catching? But I also want to make sure you leave knowing kind of what the next steps could potentially be. So, so nine to 10 minutes, again, open floor in terms of what did we hear that we need us to be included?
Sorry.
I don't need to, like, I got a good hour. One thing I have heard spoken that came in here tonight because I'd like someone to answer me how, whoever made the decision and pops up on the news and they're going to take big lots and put 48 lowest-income housing there with DSS on the first floor and capital charities right next to it, spent $20.5 million, taxpayers' money, over $12 million of which was taken from natural disaster relief recovery and putting this housing on a contaminated site that was formerly still manufactured. How is this a good idea? Because there's so many properties out there vacant in this county. You could have bought, fixed up through a legit contractor and put these people in their own homes, let alone a 40, you know, 48 apartments. It's just, that, that to me is, I want to answer on that because that's retarded.
Bob?
I don't, I certainly can't see for this to be.
Somebody answer me that. Because you don't hear about it until one day it just pops up on the news, speaking, and this is what they're going to do. And, and we should have a say in this. And I honestly feel that there is a need for low-income housing in this area. What's to address that? But wasting taxpayers' money just so Cuomo could get his aim on this little project and, I mean, that's retarded. Somebody answer how that, to this community.
Others who wanted, I know we've got Josephine and Tark. Where's the, where's the mic at?
I think I can do without my, well, I just want to thank County Executive for marshaling all the local officials and such. I think this is a great start, but, you know, we, we need to, I think, take heed of a lot of the concerns here. It's like, you know, we're facing climate crisis and our solution is let's stop using straws. You know, and I think we have to be very bold with our solutions. And the only way that's going to happen is ongoing conversations with much more diverse representatives at the table. This core group got it started, but it's 11 members, eight of them from the public sector, one landlord and two nonprofits. You look at the Broom BoAC, Broom Opioid Awareness Council, 65 members, meet monthly, ongoing. And I think we, I would just encourage the task force to think about formalizing this as an ongoing initiative of broadening representation. Secondly, as we've done and said, I mean, talking about resources, I think we, I think the task force should also put together what municipalities have access to and what resources we might be able to tap through the redact and other ones. Instead of going to large developers for luxury, how can we apply pressure and say, let's redirect these funds? But if we don't know what those resources are collectively, we miss those opportunities. And so I just think it's very important, and I'm done, is that, you know, through my work with the state and the AG's office, there is no better time than now to push for the bold housing solutions. So there, the city of Binghamton is actually eligible to apply in September or October for a $1 million grant for a strategic code enforcement pilot project. I commend the city for being in that program, one of only 10 communities. But there's no way that cannot be part of this discussion, right? And they're supposed to be going this summer, doing community engagement, working with a community group. The task force should work with them to continue this education. And there's going to be additional funds coming from the AG's office because of those settlement around displacement, around community land trust, around brick and mortar, mom and pop, and more funding for land banks. So like, this is the time and keep this momentum going. Can I just, Angela, real quick? This is day one of involving the community here. I don't want people leaving here feeling like we didn't involve everybody in this whole process. What ended up happening was we had to make a decision in the beginning to decide on who was going to be included and who wasn't. I mean, we have probably 50, 60, 80, 100 names of people who wanted to be involved. I understand the passion behind it. We do. But we needed to get a really good grasp on what's wrong. The people that are in that core group and on the executive, they're the ones who really hold the first strings. They're the, they're the outcome brokers. So we needed to get together first to iron out which directions we thought we could go. Because the people on there, they don't control the legislature. They don't control the town councils. They, they're just representative of that. So this is day one. That's why we're asking for your email and for your information. Because this is just, now we're going to start picking up momentum. That's why we wanted you to be here. We want you to understand what we've talked about and give your input. That's, that's what we want. We want your input. So all this will be sent out to you. And you can correspond with this, and you can kind of see how these recommendations will morph over the next three months. So when we do finally submit these recommendations, the executive group, we got your support behind it.
And that's the, so the next step certainly is broadening engagement at the municipal levels. We've had consistent engagement from, obviously, the county, the city of Binghamton, and Johnson City, Town of Union. But there are a dozen other municipalities throughout Broom County that are affected in similar ways and different ways. So one next step target that we have is certainly reaching out to other municipal leaders in this way because they're the ones that are going to make the decisions on recommendations. But we want to continue an absolute base, so that, so it's a question mark in terms of what this looks like exactly moving forward, but it absolutely looks like increased engagement at municipal leadership levels and diversifying engagement at the core group level. Josephine, yes ma'am?
I just wanted to say that it appears to me that most of this conversation has been geared toward people on social services. They're not the majority of the people who are poor in this community. We have them working for. Nobody but nobody but nobody is ever talking about them or trying to do anything to help them. They are important to this community. If we don't think so, let everybody get the blue in the next two weeks who are working, who are the working for. I think it's important that we bring them in this conversation. It's not just about social services.
So we're at 6:59. I promised five to seven. I cannot thank, and I'm sure I speak for the entire court, thank you for coming. Thank you for your input. If you get your email address or way to contact you, make sure you put it down. And we will figure out together kind of what this looks like moving forward.